Hello.
You voting today?
Not today.
She voted hers. How are you?
I think I'm like everything.
I don't think they let you go twice anymore.
I haven't tried in a long time.
Kelly and all, everybody.
My, uh, my friend, I went to college, I worked at a school in Washington, Washington today. All of their, like, one hundred percent. Everybody. I don't know why that you do that.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me call the meeting of the board. This is the November meeting for the Valdez County Judiciary Board of Appeals. For those of you, first time here, please sign in at the back on the sheet. Uh, if you have signed in, thank you very much. Uh, for those of you that may have never been to one of our meetings, let me explain. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lectern, give us the presentation, the request. Once they have presented it, there will probably be discussions or questions among board members and back and forth to staff. Once we have determined, we are satisfied, we understand what the request is, then I will ask if there are any persons here in support, or if the applicant is here, or someone representing the applicant, and would like to give us any additional information. If so, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, and the information you would like us to take under advisement. After we have heard from any pro side parties, there will probably be, possibly be questions, discussions. Once we're satisfied, we've heard from that side, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition, or if there are any persons here who have questions about what is being requested. If so, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you would like to, for us to take under advisement, or present the questions that you have, so we can try to resolve any issues. Once we have heard from both sides, we generally will come to a decision here today. However, it is within the bylaws, if the board feels like information is lacking, or parties need to discuss, to talk, to try to resolve some issues that we feel like as a board existing, then we do have the ability to postpone action until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay. First case we're gonna call is Louts County Case V A R two oh one eight, McGee Property.
Thank you Chairman. Mr. Chairman, board members, we received an application from Shannon Lee McGee to send the audience this afternoon. Miss McGee and Mr. Mary Anderson, who is Mr. McGee's grandfather, they are called in the process of trying to have a survey plaque recorded. Uh, Mr. McGee came to the zoning office, um, in, in search of obtaining documentation of his purchase permits, and reviewed her, her lot, the one in the lot here. Staff, staff discovered that, um, that it was a gold, that those lots were created as property. It only occurred as a code required after September nineteen seventy-two, in the last week, Sunday night, uh, we had to have, uh, the survey plaque, so when, um, in this case, the lots were, uh, made, so we might be, uh, only, and they're now, at this point, trying to, uh, get a survey plaque recorded. Staff noted that each lot did not meet the lot area or lot width, and therefore they're asking for a variance to section six oh one, oh one G, of U O B C, that it pertains to lot area and lot width. I have both, um, applicants here with us, in case you have any further questions.
Any questions from the board at this time?
I'm sorry, Chairman. Yes, Ms. Carmella, I just reminded me to give you all the T R C staff recommendation. No one had any problems with their proposal today.
All right. Thank you. Any one?
I've got a question. Not a negative, man. I'm just, I'm curious.
Yes ma'am.
As to why it was recommended, would they have to get a variance as opposed to rezoning?
Yes, very good question. I talked with Ms. Carmella about that, um, assuming that, that question came up for you as a dear, for us, looking at the two lots north of them. That was a rezoning case that took, took place back in nineteen ninety-eight, and, um, although it was approved by our leaders, staff recommendation for the same as you know. And in talking with Ms. Carmella, that was my question, well, why don't we go that route? And she said, because it would be more riskier for them to go the rezoning route, because staff would not be interested.
Any other questions? Thank you everyone.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Anybody like to add anything?
Yes, please. So, I don't have much to add, other than what's in the case, other than, my name's Shannon McGee.
And address.
Um, where I live right now is six Cherry Point, Austin, three one six five. So, my grandpa purchased the one lot back in nineteen ninety-two, and built a house on that lot, which was a one acre lot, and in two thousand and four, he purchased a lot next to him, which is one of the ones in question, um, for the strict reason for me to build a house on the property later. We had no idea that we were gonna place this, or that it was an issue, because I guess we assumed it was kind of grand borrowed in, since the lot lots, and so far and so about it. And so, that's why I brought this case to you, it's a lot, it's in there, unless something is built on it, we will have to pay taxes on it, and we, 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 so, that's why I'm here.
Any questions, any discussions? Anything you'd like to answer?
She, she's over.
Yeah, that was actually about a home, the property we purchased it. He removed a boat home, and I inherited a new boat home, the property in two thousand and four, then just moved it in two thousand and nine. That's why I said, I said, I'm not ready, so.
Okay, that, that was in the statute.
One, one question I'd like to ask, you know, uh, we built our house, we didn't have any problems, you permit, and all that stuff, uh, ninety-two, three, and then I purchased this other one, it had a trailer on it, we moved that trailer, put a bigger trailer on it, used it a few years, and got rid of that trailer. Didn't have any problems there. So, blind, you know, we want to build a house, and we had it wrong.
Things changed, and rules changed a little bit, and that's what triggered it.
People that owns western land, and the five acres, that is what is required to build, all right? Five acres? You wanna really?
No.
Not in offices.
Not, not yet.
But anyway, looks like when, when they changed the laws, people only need single lot, what do they do with it? I, I paid taxes on both of them all these years, and, you know, no problem, long as I pay the taxes, or we do something, or, uh, we've got a problem with it.
So, I, I just want y'all to understand, kind of, the history of it, I don't know, I don't even know what I wrote, but I don't know. So, that's what we have, is property that I want to build a home on. My sole reason, then, I sold my house back in April, um, sleeping in the apartment, these red built houses, spaces. My sole reason for moving there is to go with that air heater, and it's raining, so otherwise I would do my loss, because I work with the issue, it's your job, so, that's all.
Yeah. It's just, until somebody starts trying to do something, it generally doesn't trigger anything to call attention to it. Is that about?
That's true, Chairman, and as I share with Miss Shannon, you know, we know better than to do better. You know, we do a better job now, with certain things, and, you know, when the issue department for them, for the double wide, and that's, I would guess, is done in there, but, right at this point, we're gonna fix it.
We're gonna take care of the property.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here in opposition, or does anyone have any questions about what's being requested? Is there any contact to your office, called up? Deborah.
Yes, yes, Mr. West Chairman. Uh, Mr. Uh, the, the property owner, uh, who owns the piece north of, of our most northern piece that we're bringing to you today, he was here, um, he said he had got some to leave, uh, for his job, but he, he wanted me to relay his concerns, uh, he said that he moved his daughter out there, in a double wide, double home, um, in, in hopes of, of the area, uh, continuing to be, to be spacious, basically, and he was just concerned, um, with, uh, Shannon's proposal to build a home on that lot, that that would take away from that concept.
Okay. Any other questions, any other discussions? Yes, sir?
The, the other lot there that the buyer, or, if she wants to build, has the trailer on it now, been there for several years, so, I mean, we just want to build it, and it is, it won't be an economy home, it's gonna be a nice home, they figure.
Not a problem.
Not a problem, thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussions? Can I entertain a motion on this request?
I'll make a motion if we approve the request as submitted, citing criteria D.
I have motion, I have second. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you. Now, can we get along?
That's, that's, that's beyond our capability, sir.
She's had to deal now, she's had that, just for you to go, the loan, the interest that goes into her. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Make it look good, please. Okay, the next case we'll call is Louts County V A R twenty eighteen dash nineteen, Miller Estate. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off when I was talking to Carmella. I, I, I'm bad, you go back to old habits.
You have a history that I do understand, so I'm fine with that, so, but thank you once again, and, uh, this... This is the property, um, in question on this case, uh, this property is located on an old radar site, um, I have Miss Michelle, he can't hear, representing her family. This is Air Policy Chairman, and they have been for years trying to come together, um, and agree on the best way to actually subdivision, just so that each party that has an interest can get their share of individual. They believe that they've now come to, um, something that will satisfy each person involved, and I believe that. This is their actual proposal, so what we have here, they are asking for a variance to section six point oh one, point oh two, D one, as it pertains to access. The U O B C requires that, uh, each lot of the subdivisions should provide a paved public street, a minimum width of sixty contiguous feet. Uh, the two lots, the two larger lots, each have, the two larger lots that are parallel with the road, each have a private inch of a hundred and twenty plus feet. The three remaining lots are the lots that the variance is actually being requested for. Each of those lots have a private inch of twenty feet, and both require sixty, so they're, they're asking for a forty foot variance for each of those three remaining lots on this property. So, you're asking for this variance to, in an effort to have this already recorded.
I have a question. So, each of them has twenty feet, so it's a total of sixty feet?
The, the three lots that are...
That are in the back.
...for the variance for, yes ma'am.
So, that, that driveway, if you will, both three driveways go to the back?
Yes ma'am.
Each of them are twenty feet wide?
Yes ma'am.
Um, that could be, if it was all in one piece, a sixty foot road?
Could.
Could be a private road with a, uh, right way?
Um, a private road would just have to be built to county standards, as if it was a county maintained road, which in this case is small.
Okay, so, um, could they get a, uh, I was thinking about an easement of some sort through that sixty feet, so that it could be wide enough for, rather than having three driveways, to the back, to have one decent driveway that go to the lots?
Actually, on the plaque, that's what they're proposing, there's gonna be a sixty foot easement, where all three of those lots would share that one driveway, and they'll each go up to their own individual lots.
So, they are gonna make an easement?
Mm-hmm.
But each of the lots will only own twenty feet of each, okay?
Deborah, can you help me understand, um, when this plaque was done?
Yes, sir.
It's got so many different provision dates on it?
Yes, sir. I, I did speak with, um, folks in surveying, personally, Nathan, the other day, um, I actually spoke with staff Sandy, and Stan, uh, the actual surveyor, was, was, you know, in our conversation, and he just explained to me that he has been working with the, they own this project since oh week, and they have basically exhausted, um, different avenues as to how to come to some point where family would, would...
Have there been prior submittals of different designs to the county orders?
To us? I'm not aware of, of them actually being submitted to us, but I believe that at the drawing table meeting, at the, at Stan's office, that they went through the various options there, where they actually agreed to submit this to us.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. Is anybody here who would like to speak on behalf?
Hi, I'm Michelle, the teacher, and I'm the one to actually submit the app to. My address is one oh one Jackson Road, I watch the Georgia, and I'm the youngest of the crew. What has happened, different ones have passed on, and so, each time someone passed, try to get it, try to get it done, floss, try to get it, get it done, someone else passes. So, now, my uncle recently passed last year, and because, um, I'm a great grandchild, so, so this is like a third generation, and so I just told him, okay, y'all look at age, I'm gonna try to get this done, so this is where we're at, trying to get it all done and separated, before anyone else passes away.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Anything else anybody would like to add, or... Okay, is there anyone here in opposition? Have a question? I see anybody.
I have, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
On here, it says lots two A, D, and E, those are the ones we're talking about, the little skinny driveways, are not developable lots. Said that they can't put a house on them. Correct. So, they can't do anything there.
They want the ownership. They, they're not worried about developing, they want the ownership.
The separation. They want the separation.
Oh, you don't...
What is mine? Okay, was there any response to your office, Deborah?
Yes, sir. Uh, we did receive a call from two citizens on this, uh, and they each were simply in quiring as to what, what were we going to be discussing.
Did you read sign, me? Okay, any other questions, any other discussions from the board? Uh, can I get a motion on this request?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the variance that is requested, citing criteria D.
I have motion, do I have second? Second. I have second. All in favor, raise a hand, please. Unanimous, good luck with it, hope everybody gets settled and out, good shaking.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Anybody got any changes, any deletions, additions, corrections? Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Motion, Deborah, remember.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have, who was that, Brittany? Okay, you got, all in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, please make a note that Mr. Alvaro has a court situation that he had to sit out, that's why he did not vote.
Not allowed to use the words "sit out."
Sure. I think most people outside, so you know what's "sit out." Okay, now, now to some serious business. Nomination of Chairman and Vice Chairman, we have two slates. Is there any reason anybody wants to reopen nomination, just so that we can have it in the minutes? Okay. Slate one, Alan Spriglin to remain as Chairman, back the call for Vice Chair. Anybody make a motion to accept?
I thought these were already in, meant that these were, are not designed to do this vote.
Well, I say that, except I'm not gonna vote yet, I'm not... Slate one. All in favor, raise a hand. All right. For slate two, all in favor, raise a hand. Well, we didn't have a majority on either ticket, on either side, we got one vote for the first, and...
Well, do y'all have two other preferences?
What do you want to do?
You two tell us, Alvaro.
Yeah.
And then we'll vote.
I say it like it is, it's my preference, but, but that's, he might not want to.
No, that's, that's fine, you and I talked about it quietly for a minute when I got It doesn't matter, I would be glad to continue to serve, if that's what you want, if you wanna do blood, then I'll let that happen.
And if y'all prefer me blood, I'm, if that's what you want, I'm, I'm fine with that, too, I just...
All right, either way, do we need to tear up some paper, get some votes?
No.
All right, all in, let's back it up. All in favor of slate number one, Mia's chair, Matt continuing, and it's Pike's chair, please raise a hand. One, two, all in favor of slate two, raise a hand. One, two, three, all right, we got a three to two, does that, is that gonna be a word to go to do?
You're it, man.
Okay. Slate two, is accepted?
Can we go back in?
And you are not allowed to take your wigs.
Okay, so, effective January one, Matt will take over, and I get to sit in a, a peon chair.
Get the wheel over.
You get to, you get to. After all these years, I get to say, hey. Okay, uh, discussion of the holiday gathering, anybody thought about it? I was trying to get it started earlier this month, instead of waiting till December, and have all the dates gone, or whatever.
We're just open, we're open, we can...
We wanna do it, we can do it here after the December meeting, we've done that in the past.
And we will have a December meeting, but county and city have to do that.
Okay.
One each. We have one.
We can do it here after the December meeting, if that's your choice. Nancy has been gracious enough to notice you at her house two or three times, and if she's not tired of cleaning up behind you.
We're out, I will.
Have we ever done it in a restaurant, or, just had dinner, or something like that? Years ago, when there was a fund available, we did, if we don't do it in a restaurant, we'll probably have to go ditch.
Tag on one of the other groups at one point.
Yeah, we went with the planning commission a couple of years ago, over there.
We did that before, um, and budget funding is, is big, so, we can always go ditch, do ditch.
Whatever is your choice. Anybody got any suggestions, recommendations?
I like the idea of having spouses there, I mean, I, I kinda thought that was nice at Nancy's house last year. But no, no, I'm not saying, not in your house, I'm not with restaurants, I'm not with restaurants, it's fine.
So, we can, we can, you know, eat...
Take a restaurant?
Anybody got any suggestions?
We can have a small area, so that it, yeah, so it becomes more intimate with our group, when it can visit.
The Birdies Place downtown does the bar association, Christmas party. Now, it's, it's a much bigger, you know, crew, but they do a good job, I don't know how to sense it from there.
That, that brother, mom and dad, our, our son's school class uses it, it's pretty good.
Yeah, that's a good place.
My preference would be to do it before, like, the twelfth, you know, to do it at the beginning of the month, maybe until the end of the month. It's just too busy.
I would like mom and dad to be mom and dad, that'd be good.
Well, look into that, we need this.
A date?
Anybody have preference for day of the week?
I'm not saying, I don't know, D. Two, three, four.
Yeah. And that way we got a reminder.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. We won't forget it.
As an option number two, if you want, just in case mom and dad's, we'll, we'll have, um, opinion of option number two. I know Austin does a front.
I like Austin. Just as a backup, if mom and dad have a problem, you go to Austin.
Carmella, do they do it in the restaurant?
There's, um...
I know, but you feel like you're in a hotel, but...
They put together.
I mean, really.
We wanna have your spouse.
I know.
Yeah, I know, it's, it is.
We don't have a lot of children.
Anyone else?
The wooden nickel, get back my butt.
I didn't mean, yeah. Well, we used to have on that, um, what was it called, Fiddler's Green, or what was it called after that? We used to have it out there, there's a new place out there now, that Jax's Chomp. Yeah. Okay, still, I mean, I had, I heard it's good, I've never eaten there.
Who's that?
Does Jax have a bathroom off there now?
No.
Did I check there? It's the same neighborhood as Pumped It.
Who was that?
Jax's.
I always said it was called...
It's called...
Yeah.
It's called Chomp.
Yeah, Chomp.
I was... Charlie Trippers, Charlie Trippers, Bill Charlie.
Before, before that, it was Fiddler's.
All time.
All time. Telethon, so. Okay, uh, how about contacting everybody by email, let's not wait. Okay, uh, how about contacting everybody by email, let's not wait, mail in, let's talk straight. Okay, Z B O A schedule for nineteenth, they've been good enough to send it to you? January, we moved it, proposed to the eighth because of the fallen... All New Year situation, and I don't think anybody's gonna much be here for New Years. And the only other one, July fourth, was not a problem, because we gonna meet before the fourth, so hopefully, we gonna have everybody traveling early in that week, but if it comes up, then we'll have to deal with it. Does anybody have any plans for that entire week at this point? And then September, we got Labor Day, which is gonna push us to the tenth. Of course, even if we adopt it, we can adjust, we can need to delay it. Anybody got any heart rate with your proposed schedule? Do we need to vote to adopt it, or we just administrate the week? Motion to, I have motion to approve, or have second, somebody? Second, Nancy? Oh.
I thought I heard Nancy.
Nancy can hear.
Oh, okay. I was looking this way, Nancy did like this. Okay, uh, other than that, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your attention, and your going out and looking at cases. Thank you very much, we stand adjourned.
You should have voted.
Yeah.